Okay.
Yeah. I think there's two, there's two motions.
Yeah, waving and then.
Yeah.
What do you think? Fifteen minute meeting?
Oh, we could do it in five.
Ken's here, Mike's here, Sheena's here, Natalie's here. Um. I haven't seen Shelley. Or Wes yet.
It's Quorum either way.
Yeah, we have two minutes though.
I know Wes said he was coming.
Yeah, I thought so, yeah. You're not gonna let us see your pretty face this morning, Ken? Oh, you are the golf course. I know it's virtual. There's Wes. Okay, as soon as it hits one, we can start. I'll just wait a bit.
Hey. Can you hear me in chambers?
We're all virtual, Wes.
So you can hear me?
Yep, no, yeah, no problem. Where are you? Wes, where are you?
Um, I'm actually in a meeting with, uh. I am, I'm at downtown Edmonton, actually.
Oh, sorry.
And, uh.
We'll make this great.
Hopefully, hopefully it comes through, okay?
Yeah, that's good, yeah. I don't think we'll be very long.
Excellent.
Yeah. Okay, it's almost one, let's get started. So, um, tenants at the start of the meeting. Sorry. Um, did Shelley get here? Cause I've only seen.
Tax to see if she was coming.
Seven.
Councilor Bermansky is just logging in now, I can see.
Okay. Shay, I'll get you to turn on your camera so we can see you. But tenants at the start of the meeting is a hundred percent, everybody virtual. Um, I need somebody to make a motion to adopt the agenda. Ken, are you good with that?
Yeah, sure enough, that the, uh, special council meeting, oh, there it is, that the May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five agenda be adopted as presented.
Thank you, um. I'll call for the vote, use your little check marks.
Sorry. My check mark didn't work.
Okay, well, that's unanimous. Um, one motion on the table, which is the hosting of an Oilers watch party. Uh, I ran into Natalie yesterday at the crosswalk meeting and she said, rather than making it complicated and me giving up the chair position, she will make the motions, um. So Natalie, why don't I get you to just read the notice, the wave of twenty days notice, one in first?
Sure, that the twenty day notice period requirement in section one nineteen-nine of the procedure by law be waived.
All right, any comments on that or any questions? All right, I'll call for the vote on that one. I gotta take my check down and put it back up. Sorry. Wes, are you good? And Shelley's good? You're muted, Wes, but give me a thumbs up if you're good with that motion. Okay, that's unanimous. All right, I'll get you to read the second one in Natalie, and then before I accept it, we'll open it up for questions.
That the city of St. Albert proceed with an Oilers watch parties, uh, as described.
That's my typing.
Watch. Yeah, twenty-five, fourteen, and this community event be funded from the stabilization reserve up to seventy thousand dollars.
Awesome. Any questions from any member of council? Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the communication efforts around this, um. I, one of the concerns that might get raised in the community is, is how does this impact, um, private business? And, uh, and so, I mean, I think as long as we have some discussion around that this is a, uh, community event meant to be non-alcoholic, uh, family-friendly. But I just want to make sure that that gets communicated because I have no doubt that there will be concerns that this is actually taking away from our businesses that are trying to have similar watch parties.
That are full and you can't get into any single game night, but.
Fair enough, but I just want to make sure that, that, I just want some assurances that that'll be covered in our communications efforts.
I, I don't know if Diane is in, do you have an answer for that?
Um, don't, don't have a.
Um, don't, don't have a specific answer, but, um, obviously our communications team will be working with our overall team to come up, um, you know, obviously with the communication strategy for this event.
Danielle, you unmuted yourself. Did you wanna?
Yeah, absolutely. And through the chair to the mayor, um, I think that that is a key, um, proponent of this event. We want it to be family-friendly, it's community, and there's no alcohol service. It's meant to be, um, just a fun gathering of, of the community to celebrate and to really enjoy the event. So I think that is absolutely a key component of our marketing, um, and communications push. We'll also be, um, wanting to really communicate out the requirements of the space, you know, encouraging people to use different modes of, um, transportation to get there and all the equipment they need to bring. So we will be working with our communications team to pull that together.
Okay, cool, thanks. Any, any more questions, Ken?
No, that's great. I just wanted to make sure that that was raised awareness.
Perfect, thanks. I think Sheena, you're up next.
Sure. So I have a couple of questions. Danielle, where did you go? Um, so are we planning to, I realize it's outdoors, but is there any concern about like just too many people showing up? I mean, this can be like moderate or it could be just an overwhelming presence. I really don't know which way it's gonna go till it shows up, um. So are we doing, planning to do like a ticketed event where it's like you've got to get tickets in on there, or is it just gonna be like, uh, we'll just have to manage it how it handles, how it comes in?
And maybe I'll start with that response and Adam, if you want to jump in as well. We would manage this very similar to how we manage the Canada Day movie event, which is down at Millennium Park, which is free drop-in admission. There's only so much parking within the space, um, so that certainly will, um, only have interest to so many people. Um, there's only so many, so much space within the parking area that we've got as well. So certainly we have security built into the budget as well to help manage onsite traffic and, um, and people attending. Um, but we are looking to run this similar to how we would run our other drop-in movie events or drop-in viewing events. And Ms. Roy, if you want to add anything to that, please, please feel free.
Uh, thanks, Danielle. Not too much to add. Again, this is the first time that we have, uh, stepped our foot into this, so definitely will be, the first one would be a learning for us. Uh, we can only anticipate it will get better and better. Um, so again, we are planning for, um, more rather than less, and, um, we'll look to see what happens. We're quite excited.
That's great. So the other thing you guys mentioned, just for the public, for, I don't know, um, if it would be put in the communications, is what size screen are we looking at here? Cause it just says a sufficient screen size, and that's just something I think people care about, is it like people care about who's the biggest size, biggest piece of cake, they're gonna care about the size of the screen. Do we have an idea about how big it were thinking?
Uh, thanks, I'll take that question if that's all right, Counselor Hughes. Um, so the screen is the exact same screen that we use down at Canada Day. Um, easily twenty-five hundred, uh, could view the screen, probably up to five thousand. It is the largest screen that they provide. So we do anticipate, and again, as this is our first sort of, uh, kick at the cat with this, um, I, I anticipate the screen will be large enough.
Okay.
And to the Chair Counselor Hughes as well, just as a note, we did get, we did get pricing on the screen that's viewable during daylight hours as well. Um, and that really helps us because most of the games have been played at six where it's still light out, but this would allow the public to be viewable, the game to be viewable during the, the daylight hours as well.
Perfect. The other question is, I know that it's a dry event, but how are we going to be enforcing it to make sure people don't, um, violate that rule?
Go ahead, Ms. Roy.
Well, it, it, it will definitely be on the honor system. We're, um, advertising as a family-friendly event. We are hoping that our, our community, there's lots of opportunities at local restaurants or bars or establishments to have an alcoholic event. This is a family-friendly, uh, dry event, although, uh, again, we're just looking for our residents to, um, appreciate the opportunity to celebrate together, so.
And we have priced into the, the event. Do you have some security on site as well? Just to ensure that we've got, you know, if we have any issues, that we've got the appropriate kind of, um, methodology to deal with that, but certainly having it at service as well allows us to keep a, um, you know, a close proximity to what the goings-on of that event as well.
And I'm assuming you'll put signage up somewhere at the beginning just to remind people so that hopefully, if nothing else, they won't be frightened about it if they decide to violate that. Okay, perfect. That's it for now, thank you.
Awesome. Sorry about the dog barking. Uh, Shelley, you're up next.
Thank you, just a couple of questions. Is there a, a budget difference for four games versus seven games? Well, or is it covered no matter what?
Through the chair to Counselor Bermansky, that's based on about ten thousand dollars per night that we host, um, and we would be booking out for, that's why it says up to seventy thousand. That would be the maximum out that this would cost if we, if it went to seven games and we played every game. That would be the maximum value of the, of hosting these events.
Okay, and is there a rainout option, or, like, you're not moving indoors, just canceled if it's boring then?
If, if the rain, if the weather is not permitting, um, and a lot of times we can still run in, you know, in mild inclement weather with some small raindrops or such. If there's like, um, major significant wind is usually the bigger problem, is significant wind or such, that would cause a cancellation, I would say. We don't have resources to be able to pull that inside. We have bookings inside of service place already. However, if it's just a mild drizzle, we can certainly continue to, to operate.
Okay, and the last question, will there be food trucks?
And through the chair to Counselor Bermansky, that is on our plan, is to invite food trucks to come out and, and participate in the event as well. Um, we'll have portable washrooms and food trucks available, um, that way people can, you know, ha- have a coffee or a pop and some popcorn and some treats while they're enjoying that. It'll really be for, um, this is a fairly quick turnaround, I would suggest, so we're gonna do our best to kind of make this, um, a really good baseline level event for our community that they can come out and enjoy with kind of all of those assets there as well.
Okay, that's all my questions, thank you.
You're muted.
You're muted, Mayor.
I'm muted, so the dog doesn't bark at you guys good. Um, Wes, you had your hand up, but now it's down, you're good?
Yep, questions were asked and answered, thanks.
Okay, perfect. Okay, I think I see no more questions. Uh, Counselor Jolly, I'll accept your motion. Go ahead.
Great motion, Mayor, that's all.
Anyone else on debate?
I have one thing.
Go ahead, Sheena.
Um, just, you know, they're gonna win in six games, so staff should get prepared for the reality that this is gonna be, uh, an event happening in the next couple of weeks, so. That's it.
I like the optimism. I put it on Facebook today, somebody said I jinxed them, but I don't, the, the, the last two games have been amazing. So thanks, guys, for honestly, for pulling this together real quick, that, like, obviously the ledge team and Diane and her crew, um, Aunt Danielle and Anna, thank you for writing the background. I, we had a quick phone call. Um, I could just sense they were kind of excited about this too. But I think in the long run, like, I've thought about this for years and people have asked for it for years, and my response was always like, well, you don't want to take away from the private businesses, which is the question that was asked. Um, but at the same time, the last couple of games, I've tried to get into some of the private businesses, and if you don't have a reservation, you can't go. And you can't go with kids under eighteen for a lot of places. So I'm excited to be able to, if this passes, um, give back to our community, to the, that's what we do as a council, is create, um, opportunities for community to get together, and I think there's so much excitement in the, in the city and in the region right now that this would be just super fun, so. Asking for your support. Anything to close, Natalie? All right, call for the vote. One, two, three, four, five, seven, that's unanimous. And that is the end of our special council meeting, so good luck, Danielle, and how to get this organized. Um, and I'm looking forward to sharing whatever comments comes up with to promote this event, so, uh, let us know, Diane, what we could do to help push it out to the community. All right, meeting adjourned.